Do we have eleven and one? Is that the most we get, nine or a lot more? Was it twelve?
Yeah, we're eleven.
Call a meeting order if you'll stand for the inpleting of the meetings.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a vision just as broad.
Thank you very much. We are recording the meeting tonight as we usually do, and we will upload it to our YouTube channel, City of Lunapier YouTube channel in its entirety uncut. So everything you say will go out for the world to hear. And I'm glad we have a lot of people here tonight, and that's always good to see. Do a roll call.
Perry.
Here.
Meeting.
Here.
Hua.
Here.
Skatulski.
Here.
Bosley-Burk.
Here.
Mayor Gardner.
Here.
And Wakeman is absent and excused.
Thank you very much. On the consent agenda, I heard a little talk there. C and D under the Council Action Items on the second page.
B, C, and D.
B, C, and D.
Well, B, we may want, I'm going to keep that open in case we want to take some action based on the Bobby Staff 5K report. So for now, I'll keep it open, and if we choose to draft a proposal there and act on that, we have it open. Sound good? All right, do I have a motion to approve the agenda in minutes?
I propose a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through B as presented, waiving the reading. Support.
We have a motion, we have support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carried. Thank you very much. Now, the part we really missed, Councilor Wakeman, bills and warrants.
I propose a motion to approve bills and warrant number 14219, paid in an amount of eighteen thousand, seven hundred seventy-four dollars, and bills warrant number 14218, unpaid in an amount of five thousand, six hundred fifty-three dollars and ninety-one cents, and the visa in the amount of nine hundred eighty dollars and fifty-seven cents, as presented, waiving the reading. Support.
Bravo. Thank you very much. Any discussion on that?
I have a question.
Yes.
The payment to Kennedy Industries for Street Pump Field Service, sixteen hundred ninety-five dollars, is that part of what we already approved with the pump rebuilds and all that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's a separate charge for the modifications and the labor and everything for installation.
Okay. So is it all done now?
It's done, it's functional, it's working great.
So it's all done, and it's all paid?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, that pays off. Good question. Any other questions? We'll do a roll call vote.
Who's second in this?
I'm in second.
Thank you.
Yes.
Skatulski.
Yes.
Hua.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Meeting.
Yes.
Mayor Gardner.
Yes. Thank you very much, motion carried. We have a presentation scheduled for a representative from Bobby's staff. Okay, all right. Didn't get a chance to meet before the meeting, but you have the floor, we have the microphone here. Little different arrangement this time to see our guests.
Thank you, folks, for having us. I'm Lisa Russo, the treasurer of Bobby's staff, and Dennis Butch is sitting over there. He is the first vice president of Bobby's staff. So we are a nonprofit that was started about three years ago, and we provide assist with food and security in the Mason School District. And so far, Lunapier has been very welcoming to us having things, and you know, we have the blessed fax up at the library, and we have one in Erie as well, and we try to reach as many students as we can. So it's been an ongoing thing, and we've been pretty blessed to be able to provide this. What we're proposing is a turkey trot in November, the Sunday after Thanksgiving, which would be November thirtieth, and it would be later in the morning, so it's not as chilly for us to get going. And my son, Alex Russo, had a Sparklet 5K years ago, from 2011, from 2020, and so he would be our race director. He's very familiar with the course he created. He's very familiar with timing and races. He is the varsity track coach at Mason. So I put my faith in my child, in more ways than one, probably. So he would be the brains behind all of it, to be honest with you. I've been to plenty of 5Ks in my life because of him, but maybe ran a couple, that was it. But I'm not the brother. So the things that we have proposed to you are a lot of the information he used at the time that he had it, and was relaying to me that these are things that the council had offered him back then, and would appreciate if we could get it from you again. So he did, we would like to use Evans Pier Park, the restrooms having running water for the water drinking, you know, for the race at the end. The electrical for the timing equipment, and if we choose to maybe have music playing at that time, too. And the trash bins, we'd provide our own bags if we needed to, but we need something to put them in for, we don't want to leave it a mess. If the fire department, possibly EMT, could be on standby, that would be greatly appreciated. You just never know when there might be an emergency. We hope and pray that there never is. And also possibly a truck down at the end of the bydeck here on Gania Road, so that warning anybody coming over the traction, you know, the bydeck, yes, we're supposed to not be speeding, but we don't want them to be speeding or even going to speed limit with runners coming around that corner. And then, of course, if we could possibly have the police department at the other end of town just do, again, stop traffic, control it, let the runners through, try not to impede traffic too much for the residents, but you know, they do have the bike lane to run in, and so that is a great advantage for us. Any questions?
I do remember that. Alex, I will attest, runs a very professional race. He does an excellent job with it, and they cover all the bases. They've improved, and it's one of the best that I've ever attended, as far as the organization.
Thank you.
Yep. I've run a few in my day, and this is one of the best. It's very well organized.
I don't expect it to, the first year, to be very large, just, you know, we don't know at this point, but I don't, I just expect it with being the first one that, you know, in this timeframe.
I have a question. I do have a couple of questions. One is the insurance. I assume you're going to have insurance for the race as of Bobby's staff, or?
That wasn't brought to my attention, but we could definitely look into that. I know the waivers, are you talking for the runners or for?
The event itself. Usually, the promoter to cover everybody takes out an insurance policy that's paid for with the fees. It's very reasonable.
Okay, that's one thing he missed on me, so I apologize for that, but we will definitely look into that and take that under, you know.
Okay, yep, and then we'll need, as part of that, additional insured documentation from the insurance company. They'll know exactly what it is.
Okay.
It's all part of the package.
I can definitely look into that. I was under, I thought you meant the waivers for the runners to sign.
Oh, no, nope. That's all on you, so.
That's fine, no problem. I thank you for telling me that.
But.
It's a liability certificate, insurance.
Thank you.
Yes.
And it's, they'll name the city of Lunapier. There's a little spot at the bottom of it that they'll have additionally insured, and it'll say the city of Lunapier in the bottom of it.
Okay.
And I have some sample documents, but your insurance, your insurance company is very familiar with this.
Okay.
And they'll know exactly.
Perfect. Thank you.
Those are the only questions. I did talk to our insurance agent, and he said, yeah, we like to do things like that. It's not a problem with that document, which we do for everybody that really comes in.
Absolutely, yeah, that makes perfect sense. It totally skipped us.
I don't, it's over, it's a Sunday morning, correct?
Yes.
And it's usually over pretty quick, so we, I think we block off.
We're proposing that starts, the registration starts at ten thirty, the race would start at twelve.
Yes.
Try to get out of that cooler timeframe in the morning, hopefully. I mean, it's November, who knows?
Okay, yep.
And we would hopefully be finished with cleanup by three. That would be what the words, that'd be everything, we'd be gone.
Okay. I know with the street closures, it's very short time. It's not closed during that.
Exactly.
Really, it's only closed for the start, and then once they cross, they go into Lakewood and they cross Harold Drive, then everything's opened up.
Exactly. We do plan, would like to have a mile fun run for eighteen and under kids, because we are in the business of kids, and so we will not be charging any fee for eighteen and under to run.
Okay.
We might encourage help and wellness and fun wherever we can.
Do you think you'll need any of our barricades or any, you know?
We can arrange that with the police department, just have them ready.
I don't recall Alex having them, but he might have.
We usually bring in a couple of reserve officers that volunteer their time.
That's what I, I was just going to ask if you had spoke with the police department.
We have not. You were our first staff.
Okay, because that's a Sunday after Labor Day. Do we, are we going to even have anybody on staff?
No, Thanksgiving.
I said after Labor Day. We usually don't have Sundays after that time of year.
We can, we can work that out with them.
Okay.
It's very limited time there.
Okay. And if we can't do that, I mean, we would definitely cover that corner to make sure there is no traffic issues, you know, with runners or vehicles.
Any questions from council? Do you want to draft a motion for item B? You can make a contingent on the insurance clearance from our agent. That's usually how we do, is have Dustin review it, and based on his approval. I'll leave that open for now. When we get to that, it'll take, you know, we'll do a motion, and if everybody's comfortable with that. Okay, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Moving on to the mayor's report. It was a very, very busy last couple of weeks, I think Charlie will attest. The appropriate reporting is complete. We have this step done. The portal opened up early April. Several webinars later, a lot of questions from people all over the country. I tuned in to a number of those presentations just to make sure we got all of our projects listed, and this is the obligation point. I was able to complete, show the projects as complete, every project except for one that contained the sign over the overpass. When they get, when they finish the painting and they send us the bill for it, we can pay that bill, then we can close out. Now, I imagine that will go on the next year's reporting because the portal closes at the end of this month, and we have till twenty, end of 2026 to complete that report. It's actually, you can start the process of completing it, but you can't even, they don't even have a process for it yet. So we're not out anything. We have all of our obligations in place. I adjusted one of them down because through the webinars, and I asked the question about the amount, and it has to match to the penny. Our award has to match our obligations, or our obligations have to match our award to the penny. So I made a slight adjustment down on one of our obligations to complete, I had to do that to complete the report, or to submit the report and obligate all of our funds. I want to thank Connie Cole and Charlie for working together and getting that list, and council for acting on that in December. And then, Kim Cuginal from Erie helped us out quite a bit. She's a clerk there. It was a group effort collaborating and getting this done, and I really appreciate all the help. It's a lot of stress off, especially when that funding is questionable right now. There are organizations that risk losing their, our funding. As announced earlier, we are in need of a treasurer due to some unforeseen personal circumstances. Amber really has done a fantastic job. This is in no way a reflection of her performance, and she was very satisfied in her position here as treasurer. She enjoyed it, she worked very hard. It's very unfortunate, the circumstances behind it, but she's just done a great job, and it's going to be hard to lose her moving forward, but we are starting the process of looking for a replacement. I've had seven applicants so far. We'll start the formal processing probably Monday. We'll start narrowing those down. I'll meet with Amber and Charlie and look through. Some of them do not meet all the qualifications that we need. We'll narrow it down, but we have some very good applications there. It's going to be a hard decision. The process goes as we freshen our head that per our charter that the treasurer is nominated by the mayor, subject to the approval of the city council. So we'll follow that legal process the way we have to do it, and move forward with that. I expect to really make some progress Monday. I will go out, I've reached out to all the applicants and thanked them and communicated with them for submitting, and then we will start our process, selection process. I can send you their information if you'd like to look at it ahead of time, but so you're not making a decision last minute based on, you know, just the night of the meeting. I don't know exactly when, but we need to move on that to get some cross-training done and move forward with that. Dave Weaver and I met with Chris Hennessy from Flyce and Vandenberg. He's consulting with some discretionary spending grant requests that we are considering, and some category B local road funding program grants. All of these grants require a 50% match. The discretionary spending grants are considerably more money, to be honest. I'm backing off of those because we do not have the funding secured for the match on that, a 50% match. There are funding sources out there, working contacts with from the county all the way up to the Great Lakes Way, working with the Ralph Wilson Foundation, opportunities there, but if the city had to front that money, it would be a deal breaker. So I'm backing off that. However, the category B funding request is a match of one-to-one for our investment in our streets. Not all the streets qualify, only local roads. So Lunapier Road, Harold Drive does not qualify. Those are major roads. We have four major roads in the city. Lunapier Road, part of Lakewood Drive, which has already been paved, Harold Drive, and an Erie Road. Gania Road is not a major road, it's a local road. So that does qualify for the funding, and we are working on that project right now, so this may be a good time. The downside is it takes a while for the funding to get approved. We would not be able to start work until 2026 if we get the grant, and we do stand a good chance. It's very limited to municipalities, cities only that are smaller, below 10,000. So large cities, townships, villages, they don't qualify for it. We do qualify for it. So we have a good chance, especially being our, one of our main points of egress for the city, when we only have two. We will move forward with that. I think that the upside is we stand to gain about $75,000 in matching road funding. If we move forward ourselves, we pay the entire amount, which would be about $150,000. So I think it's worth putting up with that road just a little bit longer and trying to keep down your road passable, but tap into that funding. That's all I have. Any questions? Moving on to the police report. Fire department report, we have none, and the building report, we're off. We'll get one next meeting. Committee reports, DDA, we did not have a forum last night. We are working on things always. Anything you want to add to that, Dewey?
Yeah, we're always looking for candidates that have shown interest, and we got two open seats, so.
Yes.
If you're interested in getting involved in the city, please submit a letter of interest to Jim.
Yep, and the DDA, they've got it going on. They're really doing some work and working on some really exciting things for our city, based in a downtown district. And they do have some funding that is strictly for the DDA's use through the TIF funding mechanism. No reports with flood. I will add that we are, the pump station is complete, the repair that we did for the pumps, that one's up and running. There's still one more station that is not running yet, the one at Memorial Park. That is a, we're still waiting on parts on that. It's a challenge. We hope to have that soon. It hasn't caused any problems, even with the hard rain we've had, but we will need it in the future for severe storm Parks and Rec? I know they're very active. Diana, do you want to?
Nothing really new right now, although there was interest in maybe starting a community garden somewhere in Lord Tower Park. We're looking for more volunteers to work on that, too, because Amber was going to be one.
Yes. Yes, we've, there seems to be a strong interest right now, and what it would be is the city would provide a spot of land, and the volunteers would pretty much run it and farm it. I've collected some information. I have Monroe, City of Monroe's contract, how they work with theirs.
Oh, good.
And there's resources, everybody around us does it. It's something that is really low risk. It all depends on the people who want a garden and just need a space, and they can make it what they want. So if you're interested in that, see Diana or anybody with Parks and Rec, and put your ideas together. Let's make it happen. Planning, we did have a meeting. It is posted online in our Lunapier Facebook page. There were two public hearings that night. One was to allow bars in all of the downtown mixed-use zone areas of the city. That was voted down by the planning commission. It really comes down to council to make the final decision, but the recommendation is not to open that much area for use as a bar. The other thing up for discussion at the public hearing was the expansion of the current marijuana overlay to include the strip law. There was a presentation put together on that, and planning commission did approve that recommendation to expand that. Now, it will move it along in the process, and it'll go before council. Council will have final say on that. So we'll, it just happened two nights ago, so we'll have more information on that coming soon. And there'll be plenty of time for the public still to weigh in on that. That's all I have for the committee reports. We don't have any old business, new business, appointment of Tim Kennedy to Flood and Erosion Protection Committee, and we thank him for stepping up. I like to have representation from all parts of the city. Tim is from the Lakewood area. I've said it before that, living through several years when we had flooding in Lunapier, with the dike system and without, we've had both. If we do have a significant storm and the city does flood, it's not just the lakefront people. In fact, they are some of the highest elevations along here. The entire city is affected by a lakeshore flood if it happens. We had our worst flood ever, the highest flood level ever recorded in 1973. Since then, the lake levels have fluctuated. They've gone steadily up over the years. Over the last hundred years, they've just, they cycle, but they kind of cycle in an upward manner. So lakes' levels over time are going up, even though they're lower right now, they're only a few inches above the long-term average right now. That can always change. It's really important to protect the city from flooding, and the Flood and Erosion Protection Committee does that, and they do dike inspections, they look for vulnerabilities throughout the city for flooding, and they really help everybody in the city. It's not, some people think that they're safe because they're not right next to the lake. Lakewood especially is the lowest elevation in the city, so everybody's affected. We want to protect everybody. So if you want to get involved, we would really appreciate your help with the Flood and Erosion Committee. It's not a huge time commitment, but it's a very important role in the city. So I'm glad Tim Kennedy stepped up to that. Item B, then we just added, would be the race. I would recommend, if we act on that, it would be contingent on the approval from our insurance company and our police department. Does that sound reasonable? I'll leave it up to council to draft a motion if you would like to move in that direction. That's all I have for new business. Any questions? Community input. We have a nice representation here, and the microphone is open, and the floor is yours. If you want to address council, we welcome you to do that. I see an eager soul right now. If you just introduce yourself and tell us what city you live in.
My name is Jason Burt. I'm the technology director for Mason Consolidated Schools at 2400 Mason Eagle Drive. Tonight, I just wanted to talk briefly about the bond that we have going on. First of all, the superintendent wanted to thank those who attended any of the bond sessions. The last one was today, going on, I believe that might be still going on there. I know some people came from there.
Yeah, I believe, but yeah.
And I have some stacks of information that I put on the table over there. One is the 2024 Debt and Sinking Funds Mills Leaved from Monroe County. So it shows all the different schools and where they exist as far as the different recreational sinking fund debt, and that's going to be over there on the table for you to take a peek at. These are also on our website as well, so if you go to the bond page on the website, you can get this information, too. There's also a little slideshow called Mason Consolidated Schools May 2025 Bond Proposition. It goes into depths of what the bond is all about. And then, the 2025 Bond Scope Review. So if you want to see where the school is going to be spending the funding, it's going to be located in that document. I know with bonds, there's obviously a lot of information that goes around, so we just wanted to share a few things tonight. One, Michigan schools are not funded the same as other states or in similar fashions. I live in the Jefferson School District, and in the Jefferson School District, everyone's known for years, they had Fermi money, but that changed when the state decided to kind of level all that out. Schools now, a majority of them in Michigan, get $9,608 per student. Eighty percent of that is salary and benefits, and we know Mason's not the highest paid in Monroe County or even the state. in Monroe County or even the state. Our school has participated in a separate facilities assessment that the state of Michigan was doing. Matter of fact, 93% of schools opted in for identifying essential and priority needs such as plumbing, fire protection, heating, air, et cetera. The interesting thing is the state of Michigan found that there is a $23 billion shortfall needed for public schools in the next 10 years. So, you know, how schools are funded is definitely a hot topic in Michigan. We're hearing that we need to apply for grants and use community foundations. We recently applied for a 12A Michigan Healthy Schools Grant and asked for $100,000, but we have to come up with $50,000 of that $100,000 in order to receive the grant. So there are, you know, things that we have to do in order to actually qualify for grants. And that's for LED is what we were going for, for that. Community foundations are great, but we need to, they're really not meant for facilities. They're meant for educational endeavors such as field trips, scholarships, that kind of thing. But we're always looking for ways to improve. We just want to make sure that people go out and vote on May 6th, and, you know, that's all we wanted to make sure to get out today and to let everyone here know. If there are any questions, we want you to reach out to Kelly Toller. She has left her business card there, so you can contact her, so she can contact the experts and make sure that they get the information that you need if you have any questions about the bond proposal. So I wanted to thank you all for giving me the time to speak today. It was all good seeing your face. I know I usually talk about robotics. We were in the middle for this year, which is what I kind of expected us to be, so just wanted to thank you all for, you know, supporting the school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And if you can't make it on May 6th, you can get absentee ballot, Charlie, right?
Yep. Yep, and I will say, as we said before, we, the city, by law, we take a neutral stance on that. We welcome Jason and anybody else who wants to comment to any of our public meetings. We appreciate the information. We're allowed to spread information. We just don't take a stand one way or the other. So nobody needs to get mad at us. It's a very passion. I appreciate you sharing that. Anybody else? We have a, of course, that's why I looked.
Marilyn Foster, 4360 South Fifth Street, Lunapier. I want to mention the Freedom Festival, but before that, I just want to say that we continue to want to fight the blight. That's my new thing. And people have been asking me, so I'm just passing on that people would like to know what is being done with that. We've been holding on to that, knowing that the lawyer was tied up in other things, but a lot of people are getting kind of vocal about it and saying, there's other things going on in this city. Now it's springtime. Here we go again. And yes, there's been improvement, but there's a ton more that needs to be addressed. And people should be getting, I don't know if the city can start posting things about it or doing whatever, but there needs to be some activity.
Yep.
That said, I'm on the Freedom Foundation, Freedom Festival Committee with many of the folks here. We've been doing really well, I have to say, under the leadership of Joy. There's been a good amount of money raised, but we haven't reached our goal yet. And we really do need now, it's, the companies have been hit. Everybody, there isn't a soul that hasn't been hit. Collette's been running around town with her Yeti and selling anything she can sell. And all those things are happening. Committee's working really, really hard. We've done a lot of fundraisers. Now we're down to the minimum of people donating. And some people think, oh, I can't afford more than $5. We'll take you $5. If you can afford more than that, we would appreciate it. But a lot of this been happening. There's a lot of food trucks coming in, the face painting for the kids. We really need to get back on the map with, with the Freedom Festival again, and there's a lot of volunteers. If anybody wants to volunteer to help pick up trash for now or do different things, I'm sure Joy can find something for you to do. But we really, really are at the crunch time. People don't realize you gotta pay for porta-potties, you gotta pay for so many things that, that aren't sexy, but you gotta pay for them and you gotta have them. So if people could, anybody listening to this and anybody here, every little bit helps. And there's a thousand different ways to donate. There's the, it's on the Luna Erie page constantly, the, the, what is, what do you call that?
QR code.
The QR code, thank you. You can send in checks. There's many ways to do it. And if you want, you can call me and I will come pick it up. So anything that people can do, we would greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Yes, we still get people thinking that the city pays for the Freedom Festival.
Yep.
But the city does not. We, we can't afford it. The city used to put in a lot of money when we had a cash cow at the south end of the city, but those days are over. It is completely funded by private donations and corporate sponsors and anybody who generously contributes to that.
Excuse me, I should.
I got it. May 1st, we're doing wine glass painting at the Legion. May 3rd, we're doing a Derby Day at the Chateau. I think it's May 20th, we're gonna do a dine-in at the Lunapier Cafe. Whatever they get in sales that day, they're gonna donate 10% to Freedom Fest. And May 15th, there's a dine-in at Frog Lake, and they're gonna donate 10% of what other gross sales are that day too.
One of the other easier things to do if you want to donate is we put up a sign on the railing.
Right by the post office.
Next to the post office, where you can just click onto the QR code and, and take it from there.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The floor is open. Have any comments?
Freddie Needamire, 10750 Ellen Street. First and foremost, I always like to thank you folks for what you do. What you have on your plates is never that easy, right? I want to ask questions in regards, I mean, it springs upon us, we're coming upon summer. My street that I live on is Ellen Street, which bridges into the apartments, the apartment complex there. We used to have speed bumps, and it is a heavily trafficked road. Even Lunapier Police will sit and monitor the stop sign. And my concern is, you know, I have dogs, I have kids, I have my wife. It's hard to back out of the driveway when people run the stop sign. Now, the speed bumps didn't stop people, but it did, you know, help deter the speeding through. They were removable, and they've been taken out a couple of years ago and never replaced. And the reason they were removable was because the township stated that it was hard to plow the roads.
Right.
But I do know that Silvania has implemented, you know, larger speed bumps to slow traffic, and they can still plow their road. So I'm just asking, you know, is there any way, first and foremost, can we get the ones that we had back if they're not damaged? Or two, can we try to implement something in the future to help slow the traffic down? I know we don't have the police force to monitor the stop sign frequently, but they have pulled people over and ticketed based on just running the stop sign. Like I said, you know, me thinking I'm backing out of my driveway is safe until someone just speeds through it. It's a 15 mile an hour zone suggested, right, in quotations? So that's, that's my first question, first and foremost. Second, you know, we heard that, you know, we do have some things coming to you folks to vote upon. You know, one's expansion of a liquor license to go from, you know, the beach practically all the way to 75, and then also, you know, the new dispensary coming in. The dispensary has stated that, hey, if they get what they want, they'll donate $15,000 to the Lunapier Fund for the festival. They've been property owners for six months. They've donated zero. It's not a bribe. It's what they stated. Just want you folks to think about that. Okay? These are things that you guys are have to think about that are gonna change our city for long-term people who plan on being here. So as these come to your plate, I just ask that you pray on it. You know, if your no's were known before, I get it. If your yeses before, I get it. It's something to think about for those who want to be here for a long time. Okay? So they, they came up on the presentation, wasn't anything different than they did. They stated that they talked to the business owners that are there in correspondence with them. They have not, so it's his, her, his word, her word, whatever. Just again, you guys have hard things coming before you. I just ask, and we didn't have a big turnout for a public hearing, you know, and it's shame on the city. You know, you should show up and give your voice. I'm here giving you mine. But again, that's what's gonna be in front of you folks. And first and foremost, I mentioned those speed bumps. If you guys can help us out, I appreciate it. And again, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Yes. And I will, I don't know the, where those speed bumps are now or the condition, or if we still have them, but I can look into it.
Thank you.
And see what, see what we can do. Anybody else? Floor is open. If not, I'll close the community input section of the meeting, move on to council action. The appointment of Tim Kennedy to the Flood and Erosion Protection Committee. Do I have a motion?
I propose a motion to approve appointing Tom Kennedy to the Flood and Erosion Protection Committee for a three-year term ending 1/15/2028 as nominated by Mayor Gardner.
I support.
Yep. And Tim Kennedy.
Oh, sorry. What did I say?
You said Tom.
Tom.
Make sure we get the right.
Sorry, it's Tim.
Okay. Thoughts, or just want to clarify?
Either way, I supported.
Yeah.
Why?
Any discussion on that? We have a motion, we have support. Do you have anything, Charlie? Who supported?
I did.
Oh, you did? Okay. All right. That is not a paid position, that's volunteer position. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carried. Thank you very much. Do I have a motion for the turkey trot in Lunapier?
Let me, let me give this a go. I'll propose a motion to approve the special event request for the Turkey Trot 5K contingent on the approval from our insurance and police department.
Support.
As presented, moving the reading.
Support.
Motion, we have support. I'll let Charlie choose.
I just have one question. Do we need the fire, to approve from the fire department too?
And the fire department.
Okay. You.
Support with the fire department.
Yes. Thank you.
Clarification, you're good with it, you're good with it. And everybody has that.
Insurance, police, and fire. Insurance, police, and fire.
Any discussion on that?
No.
Let's go to a roll call vote. Meeting.
Yes.
Skatulski.
Yes.
Ozsler.
Yes.
Huang.
Yes.
Harry.
Yes.
Eric Gardner.
Yes. Thank you very much. Motion carried. I'm excited about that. Try out my new hip. Run a 5, run a 5K.
You were doing good last year.
Council input. I'll start down here with.
Nothing for me.
Thank you. Skatulski?
I don't have anything.
Nothing to say?
I'm good, thanks. Do we have an update on crosswalk signs or no dog on the beach signs?
I don't have anything ordered yet for that, but in addition to that, we need some, more signs on the beach for not just that, but actually cannabis use, things like that that are not prohibited there. So we're putting together a plan right now. Now's a really good time to do it, this past couple of weeks have been.
Right, that's what I'm thinking.
Immediately. I'm probably the street, I'm the street administrator, but I will put people on it. I'm not gonna, I don't have time to do everything, but we, we have some rough plans in place. We'll dust those off and, and do some implementation here and find out where, or Charlie, find out where the funding comes from and get that done, because it's, it's time. We have no correspondence received or sent. Special election on Tuesday, May 6th, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at Lunapier Fire Hall. Public hearing for the planning commission, May 27th, 6:00 PM, Water Tower Park, to discuss the master plan. Hope you can all make it out for that. Future meeting dates, Parks and Recreation, Tuesday, May 13th, at the Library. Flood and Erosion, May 20th, Water Tower Park, 7:00 PM. DDA, Tuesday, May 27th, 7:00 PM at the Lighthouse. Planning, Tuesday, May 27th, 6:00 PM at Water Tower Park with that public hearing. City Council, Thursday, May 8th, 7:00 PM, Water Tower Park. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to tell you, on last, it's okay. Last weekend, the fire chief was, the fire chief, the police chief was.